Very sizable number. And if you fell between below twenty percent, one of the options, and it's not something you have to do, but one of the options you could have is to either cut or increase taxes. But what we've asked is that you review it, and if you're satisfied with it. And it really doesn't tie you up very much because it's more of an outline. And you can also amend it by putting in a different resolution. But then if you're satisfied with it, and you pass the resolution, it's another checklist item that we have. And if we were to go through the process of being raided again, it gives us one more formal stand kind of position to turn over to the rating companies.
Anybody have any questions about that? Seems pretty cut and dry. Is it pretty good?
Thank you.
So far, so good. So the next item, you can see here, Lou, is, was brought up by Lou Marino, who's here with us tonight, regarding a pedestrian crossing light at Bridgeborough and Pancoast, having children that are visually impaired. He went to the county, as it's a county road. The county has come back to us with the potential for a shared service agreement. There are a couple of things that just on, at the onset of the discussion that need to be noted. One is that if we're going to spend, this would be a capital item and would not be decided really till next year's budget, which would be in the, in the mid to late spring of next year, in the April, March-April time zone. But it's good that Lou's here, so we can, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, just so that we have kind of an idea. The parameters on this, basically what the county said was, they wanted us to commit to provide half of the funding for this, which would be held at a maximum of fifteen thousand from our side, that we would provide police free of charge when, and if it was installed, we would provide electricity for the unit, and we would hold them harmless for anything involved with the unit, that we would also be liable for any expenses that came up if it were to be removed or moved. So Lou, if you don't mind, there's still one other comment I want to make is, actually, the provision with respect to the, sorry. It says that the payment for police officers, if there were, need to be traffic, that it extend to all traffic control devices in the township, so it wouldn't just be this one. So they kind of, I don't know if they slipped that in, or if that's some standard, but it wouldn't just be this one. We would now have to provide free traffic control for any of the devices, should there need to be any kind of maintenance on it. Right. So that's a good point to catch, for sure.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that, I'm going to assume that since that's in a separate section, that doesn't, that's out of the fifteen thousand dollar max?
Correct. As well as the electricity, obviously, and the telephone service. I would guess that, what's the purpose of telephone service? Any ideas?
Not sure for this.
Adjust it?
Yeah, no, I'm not sure. I don't even know what it is, or actually.
No, I don't either. We certainly have, there's plenty of time. I'd be interested to know what that's about, be interested to know if this is negotiable, just from, just from a ten thousand foot level, you know, like, I don't know whether they intended to put that in, or they did not intend to put that in. But really, Lou, I just wanted to ask you, if you're willing, if you'd be willing to just tell us the scenario that precipitated your reaching out to us and then the county to have this put in.
Originally, yeah, sure. Louis Marino, six Pancoast Boulevard, Delran, New Jersey. We, one of our, my son is deaf blind, and he has a mobility specialist. The mobility specialist is basically the person that takes him around town, to the light rail, to wherever, cross Route 130, and then she finds things that could be an issue on the highways, or byways, or whatever. And then she comes to us and sees if we can work it. And then, of course, then, if the commission, if we can't get it satisfied, then the commission will then acquire a lawyer to represent us to work on details as far as, right now I'm dealing with the Route 130 as well.
The Route 130.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're working on it. Basically, originally, it was going to be just a crosswalk with the sign up saying, you know, but then the commission for the blind, the mobility specialist came out and said, well, you can't see the person that's standing, especially with the speed limit being thirty-five miles per hour, and you cannot see the person coming from Pancoast, crossing over Bridgeborough to the other side of the development. So, you know, to the next development. So because of two, two of the poles are there, plus the new pole they put in for the device. So that, that's where the problem resolves. You can't, when you're coming from Delran towards Riverside, you cannot see a person standing at the crosswalk, at all. And, and, you know, and somebody doing thirty-five miles an hour is definitely not going to see, whether the person is sighted or not sighted, you know, is that person is not going to see that. And in this day and age, I know in our DMV books, it states that, you know, blind person would wave their cane in the air, and you're supposed to stop for them. Well, they don't teach that anymore because of the fact that, because of the world the way it is. That's considered a threatening act. So they don't, they took, actually, they don't teach the blind people to do that anymore, or visually impaired people to do that anymore. So, and that's, that's how we got to that, and I went to the county, and, you know, the county said, well, because it's in Delran, we have to get an agreement with Delran. You know, I don't know how all the processes work, but that's why we're here now with this.
So is there, is there, you know, just a couple of questions. Certainly, I think we all, you know, we all feel that we want to do what we can to help, but, you know, we need to ask some of these questions.
Sure.
And please take them in the spirit of what we're trying to find.
Absolutely.
So, so is there something that, just trying to find a purpose for cross, the reason that they would be crossing Bridgeborough, is that something that?
Well, I mean, he, one, I mean, eventually, when he's old enough to go on his own and do things, you know, his Boy Scouts is at Delran Fire Cup number one, so he would have to cross over to get there. You know, he has a friend that actually lives in the other development, who's also visually impaired. So I can't give her name or address or anything, but, but, you know, but, so, I mean, he does have reasons that he needs to walk down to Riverside downtown. I mean, if he wants to cross over to go that way, I mean, he needs to, you know, that's the purpose of why I've been fighting, I mean, I'm right now dealing with New Jersey Transit as well, because they have no braille at their, at their New Jersey Transit Riverside right now. So.
So the other thing is, this location, if this location is problematic, you know, is this something that, should we decide to do this, that we would maybe try to find a safer, you know, if it's a difficult to see location, and, you know, it might start at somewhat of a safety deficit? Is there a better location, you know, at a different corner that would make more sense, you know?
I mean, the commission, this is what, you know, they told us, that this is what she saw, and that's what she, you know, came out to tell us to, you know, addition for that intersection.
And I sure we don't.
I mean, originally, when the county came out and repaved that area and put the nice little turn lane, they didn't even put in crosswalks. So, so, you know, the county engineer that was working on that didn't even think to put crosswalks there at all. So that was one of the biggest arguments.
Have they added them?
They added them, and then Delran put their crosswalk in along Pancoast.
Sure. So Jim, Jim had a question.
What did you, what did you mean by like, they can't see them? I don't understand what that.
They, they can't see the person sitting at the corner.
At the corner.
At the corner of Pancoast and Bridgeborough. You, if you're standing at that intersection, and you're coming from Delran into Riverside, you cannot see that person.
Is that because they're obstructed by utility poles?
There's obstructed utility poles, and of course, the new pole they put in, so.
It's like a term, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we're just looking at it on the map. Yeah, there is a curve just before that. This is, this is Pancoast, you know, for those not familiar with it, I'm just looking at the map, as a slight job over to Jason Court, James Court, just past the curve at the Knights Columbus, before you hit Bridgeborough. It is, it is an intersection where you don't really see Bridgeborough, or I'm sorry, Pancoast coming up, if you're going away from Route 130 toward Riverside. So I'm just wondering if that, I mean, if that's absolutely the best location to cross, if it's, if it's a dangerous place to cross, maybe, maybe we need to figure out a better, a more visible location for the drivers. But that all being said, I mean, we, I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight because we really don't know. They didn't really explain to us exactly what they're proposing, and if that's, if, you know, if our engineer take a look at it and see what the, you know, if that's the best idea. I don't know what, frankly, the safest idea, you know, is whatever we would want to consider.
Right.
But, you know, that's a difficult, that's a difficult road, I got to tell you.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe I don't have to tell you.
I got a couple of things. I'm all for safety, especially for hanging up handicapped children and stuff. So, I mean, I understand totally. My question was, I guess, the responsibility of Delran versus the county on a county road. So, I mean, it is a county road. I get it, it's a Delran resident, but I don't understand why the county would be asking us to go in with them. Is my first question. And the same with the Route 130. I would think that means it's a state road, it would be a state requirement to do something on 130. So, I mean, unless, and there's a lot of times we try to get into agreements with the county where they'll help us and we help them. But I don't understand where they can just expect us to be responsible for their road, is, is my first question. And has, have we gone back to the county and asked them?
We have not.
Why, what is our responsibility, why is it our responsibility?
We have not. We just got this, we wanted to take a look at it. Lou had asked a couple of times about it.
And I think we should reach out to the county and support Lou with the county, and say what we feel. It's a Delran resident, we're supporting our resident. But my feeling is that I think, I think it's a county road, and I think that's the way we handle it first. And then understand why the county, and the other question is, and Jim, maybe you can help us, is, are there similar situations in other towns where it's a county road or a state road? And is there any type of, something, you know, already that has taken place where it does involve the town also, or is this something that all of a sudden, this is the first time? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, I know, I know this, if the, if the municipality or county, for that matter, wanted to like, say, solicit the state to study an intersection and do certain improved, improvements to that intersection, the state won't turn around and send a shared service agreement and require a certain cost contribution to that effort. It's really a policy decision of the state, of the county, and of the municipality. I mean, there's no, nothing's ever the same. You know, at one point, the state could say, well, that's important enough, we're going to just do it. Or the county might say, that's important enough, we're just going to do it. You know, it's, it's really hard to.
I mean, we all have our own budgets and all responsibilities.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. And my other thing is, like I said, is there already a set example of another case like this in another town, and which involves maybe the county and a municipality? And, or is this the first one? Is this unique?
I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not saying that there isn't, it might be. I mean, I've heard, or we kind of talked around a lot about the shared service on certain improvements. I think what's necessary is to have some sort of meeting with whoever it is you're dealing with from the county as far as what their thought process is.
At this point, I'm dealing with John Engel, but it's actually Marty.
Livingston?
Livingston is the person who's.
Yeah, I know, we know both them, we can set a meeting with them, find out what their thought process is, what the intent is, I mean, when they throw out traffic signal, I don't know what that means as far as. It's not going to be like a signal like.
No, it's supposed to be, it's.
It's like a pedestrian.
It's supposed to be, you know, you push the button, it turns yellow, to let them know that somebody's trying to cross the road. I think there's one in Moorestown by the county park, which is a county road.
Yeah.
There's one on Moran Highway in Amesport, which is another county road.
Yeah, I think the best, best example is on the one at the County Resource Conservations that are in Moorestown.
While we're looking at them, are they county roads?
I believe they're county roads.
Can we check on those roads and see how they were handled, whether or not they're doing a shared service?
Yeah.
Let's go from the left to the right.
I didn't understand it either, so.
Maybe we'll set up a meeting as well, we'll let you know.
Yep, thank you.
I think Lou said the, that they already put a pole in for this?
The pole is already in with the cross sign.
So, I mean, there may not be much expense, you know, that's what we should sit down and figure out. They may have already expended most of this, they may just want us to, maybe it's not going to be nearly as much as they say. So I think we have to figure out.
A lot of the first might not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I've had a meeting. I'm not able to hear what I was saying. Lou's indicated that there's already a pole that's been installed, so maybe we, maybe we also get a status of that. Jeff, are you going to, is that a meeting?
It may already be seventy-five percent of the way there. You know, it's.
We'll set up a meeting with that.
Beneficial cost wise to us in running the project, maybe almost not.
Yeah, I mean, there already is the flashing beacon there, but they had a button, the flash is that, that sign, right?
No, it doesn't, there's no button at this point. It's just a sign with a yield crosswalk sign, that's all it says.
Oh, it doesn't light up?
It doesn't light up.
No.
Oh.
Not yet. That's what I, that's what we're looking for.
So maybe it's not a signal per se, but more of like, just to put the flash again?
Right.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we'll set up a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you, sir.
To our attention.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so next, we have a discussion of the Hartford and Conroe Road Intersection. Jim has presented us with a proposal, and I, and I think that subsequently to this proposal, we received, we're in receipt of a letter from, well, they sent the letter, so I guess I can say the father. Let's just say the residents at the top of the T at Hartford and Conroe. So what's in here seems to be preliminary, kind of a general survey, get an assessment of that intersection. But I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read the letter, but, so, I think we need, we need to not only address everything here, but we need to see if we can incorporate some safety issues for the, there's actually two homes, but they're the one that's in the dead center in there. So, so I think, you know, I think we all agree that this is a very important topic of discussion because it's, it's a, it's a kind of a disaster of a intersection. We addressed a little bit, it helped a little bit, we expected that, we would see how the next step would go. But would you be able to, I know this is from March, if you could just kind of revisit this and include some sort of safety measures for this, in front of this house? You know, you know how some talk about, right?
Yeah, the ones right across the street.
Right. So your, the assessment is, is to kind of just do the preliminary stuff? Does that include, what would, just help me with what this?
Yeah, I mean, you raised this issue with the concern with the intersection a month ago.
Yeah.
And, you know, so we gave you, you know, a cost estimate to do basically a traffic study of that intersection, establish where the right wing limits are, evaluate, you know, the volumes, the traffic volumes, the capacity of the intersection, do a traffic signal monitor analysis, and with all that information, prepare conceptual plans on how to improve the intersection and what cost that's going to take to do various improvements. Subsequently now, the resident actually sent a letter saying, hey, it's kind of, you know, we've been having problems, we're still having problems. It seems like your major problem right now is either cars are going, are not stopping at the stop sign and going through the intersection, or there's a collision and the car's ending up in their front yard and knocking out. Knocking out, right. So, I mean, our, our valuation will include accident history review, I think I already spelled that out in there, as well as, you know, making the intersection form safer, and, you know, with less delay, that's just automatically inherently is safer. And looking at different improvements to help, you know, protect the surrounding areas through bi-rail. I mean, straight to the point for the recent letter, they just straight up and said, at this point in time, they want to put rumble strips in on the Conroe Road approach to help advise people of the upcoming stop sign. I mean, we can evaluate that further, we can cost that, obviously, and then, they're not, you know, they're allowed, you know, so people might have more of a, find it more of a nuisance than actually a safety benefit. So just some things that could be considered.
So this, this is what you recommended in March?
That's our proposal.
And this is what we want to do now, is what I'm saying, right? I mean, this is something we should be doing.
Hi. Has any objections?
Okay.
What I want to make sure, though, is that, that when you're done this work, that we'll be able, you'll be able to incorporate any of the safety issues that were brought up from this letter.
Certainly, yeah.
In your, in your next, your proposal on how to mitigate whatever you find.
Certainly, yeah. As part of our, as part of our, of that work effort, we evaluate the accident history, the police reports, find out what's happening, who's coming from what direction, what the major type of accident there is, and prepare recommendations on how to improve a lot. Yes.
I'd like to piggyback off of that. I think, I first brought, I think I first asked Gary to discuss this on February twelfth, second? Twelve, we talked about it. It was the first time we brought this up because we were getting complaints from residents about the intersection. My position is the same, I think we have to get this study done, as you.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not to resolve just the issue of the cars ending in.
No, I think, I think it's a bigger issue.
Running it, it's, accidents happen there, and we need to address it to make it safe.
Right. It's not just the issues that were referenced in this letter, I think it's broader than the whole intersection. And that was what we first brought this.
I agree. I don't know why we waited this long. We did Maro Island on before this.
Because you don't have the funds.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Right, so, so this, this, this was.
You did Maro Island.
Maro Island, a capital project, this is not a capital project. So.
Put it in the operating margin.
Right. So, so, two things. One is, is, you know, we want to, we want to try to address the left turn coming from, you know, Moorestown in there somehow in this, and the, and the information that you're going to gather is going to give you the opportunity to do that as well. Just want to make sure that.
Yeah, no.
We're agreeing to everything that needs to, so that you don't have to come back and say, oh, you know, if you wanted to do that, we should have done that. And then, and then, so when is, so what can we do with this? Can we authorize this or not yet?
You don't have the funds.
So this, this needs to be done.
You can put it in your preliminary budget, but then make sure you carry off enough to put it in the final budget in two thousand and twenty.
You should.
I mean, this is almost the entire amount that you budget for, for engineering for a year, for general engineering. That's where this one has to fall.
Okay, so how do we ensure that that happens?
Put it up there, you guys have to prove it.
No, no. Okay, so I just want to make, so you would know when to include this, and if there's any in the, in the, is that preliminary budget, we could get started on that earlier in the year? Or would it not be able to be done until we finalize the budget?
Preliminary budget is done in January, I mean, it has to be done in January.
Right, but could we include this in that? Okay, so let's make sure that we can do that. Do we need to do anything to memorialize our decision with this? Do we need to make a motion?
Take any other formal research at this point? You really don't have to, you couldn't authorize something for next year's budget at this point.
Oh.
They'll call a motion.
You don't remember what to do with it.
And just, just to clarify your question, so the authorization wouldn't happen until January?
Right, so.
And then recognize that you have a significant increase in that lineup for eighteen thousand.
Right.
Because the total budget for engineering, for general engineering is usually fifty thousand dollars. So you're looking at probably about eighty.
Right.
Next year.
We don't have any money to be able to handle this right now, as far as the analysis.
No, you can't make transfers to November first, anyway.
So can we possibly do that for November first?
We can look in November, I don't know that you're going to find thirty-two thousand dollars.
Can we try?
Well, we'll look, it's not going to try.
And is there any way, maybe we can pay a partial and then, Jim?
Yeah.
Not like the start.
There is different phases and tasks, like doing traffic analysis and survey.
Break it out then for me as to what you could do this year versus next year.
I like that the start.
I'll say the same thing. I'll review the different components and what kind of.
Yeah, I agree with Ken, because I think this is sooner the better, because it's going to take, give me your firm opinion, obviously.
Yes.
It doesn't.
Consider we get the information there, and at least we know we're going to do it.
Right, so, so we know, you know what you're doing, Jeff has the timeline, and, you know, I think we all, we all understand, it's important, we want to get it done. You know, we just hit the, we just hit the bad spot for this.
And then to answer your question, everything in the residence letter will be addressed as part of that study, and then stuff that's not in the.
And that's up, awesome. That's, well, that's good, that's exactly what we want to do. Anybody have any further comment on this? Okay, so Jeff, talk to us about the janitorial contract.
Janitorial contract's up at the end of October, so we'd like to have an authorization to go out to bid for a contract.
Make a motion, resolution, roll call vote? Okay, so I need a motion to pass resolution, two thousand nineteen dash one eighty, that would authorize Jeff to put our janitorial contract out to bid.
Give me a second.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Lyon.
Aye.
Mr. Ramondo.
Aye.
Ms. Correa.
Aye.
Mr. Vole.
Aye.
Yes, aye. Okay, so next is the two thousand nineteen road improvement program.
We have pre-construction meeting on September twelfth. You have a copy of the minutes from the pre-construction meeting, project date, start date, planned for October seventh, two thousand nineteen. I think everything else in there is something spontaneous, unless you have anything to add, Jeff?
No, we're supposed to have more detailed schedule provided by Pioneer tomorrow, so I can circle the terms, Jeff, and then you can put it on the website.
Great, it's great news. Weather's good.
Yeah, and we're hoping to have most of the roads done this year, it's just River, River Road, River Drive might wait, half of it might be done this year because of the county trail project. We have to do certain improvements first, and then they're doing the rest. But we know Pioneer has a good relationship with R.E. Pearson, who knows R.E. Pearson, who's doing the trail. The contractor's on a trail, so they might be able to coordinate together and get them out for the year.
Have we communicated to the people on the River Road that, that they may not get their whole section done because of the trail bits, or at least they know the reason?
Not specifically yet, no, but.
At this point, you can make sure we do that, so when they see everybody else get done, and they're, I want to know what the reason is.
Okay, so, rocking, that sounds good. Next is, we had a request to redo the suits for soldiers program, where people donate suits that worked out, seemed to work out really well last year. We approved it last year, it's pretty much, Joe handles that from Farmers Insurance, you know, local, one of our residents, and really has taken the lead on that typically in the past. Are you just looking for us to say, can we do it again? Anybody have any questions about that? I think we can, it's pretty much a no-brainer, it's, he can do it again, do we need to memorialize that?
With a motion and a voice call vote, no resolution, I'm going to say.
Okay, so can I have a motion that we approve the continuance for this year for the suits for sailors program?
Motion.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Joe. All right, next is, is a discussion that Virginia brought to us, and I, I thought the resident that was, that was, made the inquiry would maybe be here, but, so, so there's a couple of things, we probably couldn't answer all the questions, I was kind of hoping we could get some information from her tonight. But this is a discussion of boats and cars that are currently parked legally on the resident's neighbor, an adjacent neighbor's property. It's, it's just not there, the resident is asking us to review the ordinance to see if we want to make any changes to it in.
Are parked legally, is that?
Yeah, it's parked, it's parked on their driveway, it hasn't been used in fifteen years. It may or may not be registered, we don't know for sure. I can tell you that Motor Vehicle Commission has no requirement for the vehicle to be registered. I can tell you that Motor Vehicle Commission has no requirement for the vehicle to be registered if it's not being used. It's just really a township thing. If, and the resident frankly requested that we change the ordinance to disallow this. So, I said that we would discuss it. I was hoping that, that she would be here in order to provide more information about the circumstance and why it looks as if, from seeing the property, that it just looks like it's, this is a neighbor issue. And that it's, I don't believe that it's parked illegally. We can ask Alan to assess it.
I thought, I thought vehicles, and, and maybe I'm off-deep, you would probably know very well. Vehicles or boats or whatever do have to be registered on the property. They can't be unregistered.
It's actually, the ordinance is silent on boats.
Parts of it, right?
Oh, parts it addresses.
So I, I would say this as it pertains to the applicability of the property maintenance and the traffic ordinance, specifically the parking provisions within those. I will say that I would like to touch base with the code enforcement officer, who's already issued an interpretation to see how my interpretation lines up with said professional's opinion. At that point in time, I can issue a formal legal opinion to counsel that would spell out any options regarding what would be an appropriate remedy if boats or are not included in terms of.
Right, an amendment. Right. And, you know, I don't know that, that counsel has the inclination one way or the other to, to change an ordinance. I know that in the past, we've often said that we don't like to change an ordinance to, to address one specific issue because of the potential unintended consequences. So I think we need to get more information, and we need to get your legal opinion on what is and isn't an issue, Virginia, as soon as we get that. If you want to talk to the resident, do you want to add anything since you brought this?
I, I just think that the main issue was the fact that it wasn't registered, and it's sitting for 15 years now.
Right.
So just, just to clarify, the purpose of this discussion, when we say registered, we're talking about registering with the state as in license?
I think she said license, she used the term license. I'm using register. I don't know about boats, I don't.
The municipality doesn't license or register boats.
Right.
Or vehicles for that.
She said license. I don't know if license.
Maybe she has license plate or something that'll play on.
Again, that would be a state issue. But we would need to confirm, we need more, a factual inquiry, and I need to discuss with the code enforcement.
Yeah, I can show them to change it to say that, like, a boat on a property, even if it's on concrete, would have to be registered or licensed in order to sit there.
Okay.
You know, then.
That's what she was on the.
Tom's going to bring up a point, but before you do, Alan, do we have the authority to say that, to say it has to be registered in order to be on their property?
Generally, the statute that applies to the municipal authority says that, there's a general catch-all, there are very specific grants of authorities to what we can implement ordinance for, and there's a general catch-all that anything that will further the health, benefit, and welfare of the residents of the municipality. So you would need a rational basis as to how requiring a state registration for somebody to park their boat and slash their vehicle on their private lot, how that would be to the benefit and welfare of residents of the municipality. It can't, it can't exist in a vacuum. We can't say that it's a benefit without actually having a factual basis.
Okay, so, Tom?
The only point I was going to make is that there's really two registrations that would be in play. There's always the placard that actually goes on the side of the boat. So when it's in the water, if you got pulled over by the Coast Guard or any kind of Marine Police, that boat is registered, been inspected. And then the other piece is, if it's on a trailer, is the trailer, the tag on the trailer, is that registration carried?
As a separate, yeah.
As a separate. Because a trailer could, trailer, whatever. So there's really, what do they talk, is it the boat itself, the trailer, or both?
Right, it's probably, I mean, likely both, but if it's, I don't, you know, there's no requirement. There's no requirement from the state, if it's not being used, that it be registered.
If the boat's not in the water, I do know. I'm not an expert, but if the boat's not in the water and being used, then that sticker, it's when it hits the water.
Right.
The one on the boat.
I, I checked. It's, it's, there's no, there's no state requirement that it be, if it's, if it's sitting in a trailer on private property and not used, it doesn't have to be registered.
I think the concern, I don't think it's about the registration. I think it boils down to she's, sounds like she's upset that there's a boat outside somebody's house for 15 years. I don't think the registration is actually the bottom.
And the appearance.
Yeah, I think it's more appearance, so that's what it comes down to. I think, so maybe that's a way to regulate it, but to your point out, if you do some research on this, can you see what other towns potentially do? I mean, don't do like a New Jersey survey, but, you know, just, I mean, I think it's kind of surprising that there's no mention of boats, because I know we've had this issue with towed property where there was cars out, or it may.
Vehicles are addressed.
Yeah, vehicles, there was issues where we have towed vehicles and things like that that were on the property for 10 years. So, you know, that's, let's just, while we're here, we might as well do our due diligence and work.
Yeah, I agree. Let's check other things.
Jeff, Jeff. Parts.
I don't know what you're thinking, but it's all.
Specifically.
Really? So, I mean, it's kind of, it's, you know, I don't know.
I think some trees or bushes were removed, and she's able to see.
Right.
Which is why it's coming up. I don't know that it's probably been.
And I understand it too. How about if the boat is actually deteriorating in spite of rot and all that stuff?
Well, that's, that's a whole different issue. That's not a parking issue. Then that's a health, a maintenance, a sanitary issue, that we would necessarily have to address this parking ordinance for a code enforcement officer to take action.
Okay, so maybe that's the other avenue.
Well, I think our first, our first line of inquiry is to find out what the, the code enforcement officer has to say.
Correct. He was on, he was on-site, my understanding, to inspect that as well.
If you reach out and, and find out, get back to us, please.
Sure, of course.
Okay. Okay. The, before we go into close, we'll do our roundtable. We have none of our department heads, other than engineering and legal, but we do have our township clerk, Jamie, anything for us?
Nothing.
All right, Jeff, anything for us?
What I'm, I'm going to hand out to you, it's, there's a process we have to go through with the GIF, with, with cyber liability and developing policies in order to get lower deductibles and lower co-pays if there was a cyber event. And we've started, we've started, nearly finished doing the whole cyber review. And what I'd like, I think that the program, I have to have our, our computer IT person sign off on it. He's going to come back in and take a look at all the steps we've taken. He signs off on it. Then I'd like to get this resolution adopted as soon as possible, indicating that we're submitting our plan to the state. Once it's up to the state, it's approved, and we have the lower deductible. So I've been working on it off and on most of the last week. So if it does get signed off on, I'd like to get it on the public meeting. And this is just so you can take a look at it for now, so you see what's coming, and any additional information I'll provide to you between now and then. Hopefully, we get it done before.
Okay. And the public meeting is, is next week?
Right.
Okay, great. And this is the sample resolution, or this is the resolution?
It's a sample, I mean, it's got everything in there that it needs to. There's a policy that will go behind it, a policy, I just need IT specialists to come in this week to sign off on it.
Great. Jim, you have anything additional for us?
Nothing new. I was just saying, for the next workshop, I'll make sure I get you guys a detailed stats report. I haven't actually gotten one in a couple months. And there's just a lot of little things going on, nothing critical at this point. We'll be filing our Burlington County Park grant applications due next Wednesday. We should be hearing from CDBG soon on grant funds, which I believe they're getting some money, for ADA improvements over in the, the College Streets. We should hopefully be hearing from municipal aid soon for, for your grant programs. That's for the second half of Conroe. That should be coming in October, I think they want to get out before Election Day. And again, a road program's starting, and then there's just a bunch of little other stuff, I'll, I'll teach you one. Okay, unless you have any questions right now, or anything else.
I don't have any questions. Anybody else have any questions? I'll take that as a no. Alan, do you have anything for us in open session?
Nothing for counsel tonight.
Okay. Okay. Councilman?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Councilman? Councilwoman? Councilman?
Couple of questions, actually.
Okay.
I was over at the community park, there are full baseball games going, and a couple people came up to me and asked, this may be a simple answer, I don't know. They weren't using the scoreboards, and they wondered why they were using the scoreboards. This may be more of an AA thing. They're in AA. I don't know if anybody has the answer to that question, as far as how I could guide them maybe to use the scoreboard if they so choose to use them during the games. I don't.
You'd have to ask them.
I'll find out for you.
And they can use the board?
Yeah, yeah.
I assume so, yeah.
I'm sure it's an AA thing, probably Bob Kennedy, but you can reach out.
Right, and there, there's signs, and there's, you know, a parlor, Chevy's on the one who's putting it in the number, so there's advertising, so I don't know.
The AA used.
The AA installed the boards themselves.
They did, okay, I wasn't sure.
Well, they, there was, there was the fundraiser to do the sponsorship. So, I mean, obviously, they want, they want attention drawn to those boards, and it, you know, it may not.
It may have been just that night somebody wasn't there to turn them on, I mean, it could have been.
Pretty routine, I've been there quite a few times.
And they're not using them all?
Yeah.
I don't know if they always use it in the fall, I'll double check.
Yeah, maybe they don't.
Maybe that's what it is. I, I just figured I'd mention it, because people brought it to my attention.
I'll find out.
I'm sure there's some sort of administrative, like, you just got to get the controller.
Right, so you got to be there, right?
Yeah, to operate it, so maybe that's what it is. But I figured I'd mention it, see if there's any way we can use it. The second thing about Community Park is, we're there, it is fall ball, and it was pretty darn to the parking lot.
Lights were out and be changed, yeah.
So for.
Parking lot, right?
There's the parking lot lights, yeah, obviously, the field lights were on, but it was right up to the parking lot. A little dangerous for a lot of the kids walking back to cars.
I'll double check. I know I sent a text out that night when I got there.
And then the final thing is, just something to propose to counsel, not propose so much, it's just to open the discussion maybe. The gentleman from Tempe Chase, who was here last, one of our last meetings, and discussed this meeting on Tempe Chase, he sent a follow-up email to that meeting saying, proposing that what if we make a parking lot out of the baseball field that's on Deutsch? Deutsch Field is off Tempe Chase, and it's utilized for soccer primarily. There is a baseball field there, I don't know if it's ever used, maybe it is, if it is, somebody, you know, trying to do using it. All right, so this proposition was to, I guess, pave it over, use it, gravel it over in some way, use it as a parking lot to help alleviate some of the congestion there. I'd be open to that if, if people aren't going to be upset about losing the field, but if that's going to count as a need for it.
I know, I asked last year of Bob Kennedy with the AA if they still needed that field, and he said they did, because.
There's a guy that's complaining stuff in the back as well, right? Wasn't the guy?
Well, there's been a couple issues. It makes more sense to either make that a smaller practice soccer field indoor parking, rather than have one baseball field in the middle of, you know, Vermes and Don Deutsch where all soccer. But at the time, he said they were still using it, but I can inquire again.
Was all of Community Park operational at that point, when he was still using it?
Yeah, yeah.
Anytime we can get additional parking, that's a great idea. I mean, like I said, we've got to figure out what to do about the ramp over, it's still, tonight they were all out there again, tonight, because they.
I didn't come that way, but I know that the, there's been yellow lines painted by California.
Oh, they did?
Yes, and the signs up, no parking.
No, no, it's going to be the yellow lines on the curb, or the?
Yeah.
No, no, we were talking last meeting, I don't think you were here, about having maybe the lines to keep them off where the cars are, so it's safer for kids, and also have maybe a drop-off.
Yeah, Tom's talking about the corner.
I'll talk about the corner.
Yes, I'm glad that got.
That they get dressed.
But they were all out there again, because they, it's like mobbed, the parking.
Yeah, as we, as we have these discussions, especially with Tempe, you know, the fields there, it is, it is just mayhem. Especially on Saturday mornings, there are cars on both sides, kids are crossing between the cars, and we definitely need to do something there, specific to, to that issue, the drop-offs, the pickups, the kids go back and forth. And maybe the answer is parking, but, you know, let's, let's figure that out. You know, no parking whatsoever itself, there's just, those lots are not big enough to handle. Well, there's a, there's some parking in there, but there are three or four at least fields on the Don Deutsch side, and there's two on the Vermes side, and there's one parking lot, and then there's kind of a row of cars, and it's not striped really, so I don't know. You know, it's kind of catch, just catch, cat for that. So, are you, is that all of my?
Yeah, those are all my comments for you.
So the only comment I had, if, if you have not indicated to Jamie that you will or will not be attending LEAGUE this year, again, the, the township will pay for the registration to LEAGUE, and that's it, hotel accommodations, food, drinks, whatever else you do down there is kind of on your own. And the only reason that we do that is because to register for LEAGUE and attend the, the GIF's insurance session, we pay $75 for a registration, and if you attend that session, you can get $250 removed from the insurance premium. That's a deal for an hour, you can do every day of the week, I wish. But if you have not indicated that you're going or not going, please make sure Jamie knows before.
One of the, one of the things is, if, if you don't go, there is the ability to still go here, and you still can get that, that money.
Right, so you can do it, you don't have to do it at the LEAGUE, but if you were interested.
And I noticed one out to everybody, I can resend it out if anybody's interested in, no, Tyler, I think you got back to me on it, it's still a little early yet. The first one's in December.
Yeah, I think the middle one's in December.
But I'll resend that out, and if anybody wants it, we can, I can put the reservations in all at once, if you pick a date. I think they're doing the opposite, and they're doing the early one, close by, usually it's the late one.
Okay. Ken, you have anything tonight?
Yeah, I got two things. One of them is something that we brought up a while ago, Kennedy Square Parking Lot.
Oh, my God, yes.
It's been cited, they're in court.
I also saw Ken on Facebook, I think one of the owners put out that he's waiting to, for the deal with the Chili's to go through, repaves the parking lot. That's at least what someone said on Facebook.
He's been, he's been cited, and he's got a.
And then a resident mentioned to me the gas station next to that, apparently. The gas station, apparently the parking lot was banned there too, where people.
Tempe and 130?
Yes.
I'd say that's an accurate assessment.
So is there something we can have that looked at as well?
Can I second off on that real quick? Someone actually mentioned about that property.
That was mentioned to me.
There's a lot of boats and parked cars and things. I, I know they do repairs and all, but there seems to be stuff that hangs out for
I, I know they do repairs and all, but there seems to be stuff that hangs out for a very, very long period of time.
Still talking about the gas issue?
Yeah.
So, maybe.
It's a nothing, it's a nothing. It's right next to the bank.
Again, we're, 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 there are applicable provisions as to how long. Sorry, can you take a repair vehicles can remain on?
The parking lot, somebody mentioned to me, what's in the bank? I was like, okay, and I looked at it, it's awful. And then.
Yeah, and they're, and it's accurate, you know, they, they tend to use the outside as a storage area for, for discarded property.
Yeah, they definitely do.
They haven't been great with the lawn, but we're kind of past that season. I obviously live at that bank and I go through that intersection every day, right down the street from my house, so.
But that is addressing the ordinance. How long repair vehicles can at any given shop be stored there that can be remedied by the code enforcement?
I don't think a lot of them are repaired. I think they end up there.
They're staying for a while.
It's a junkyard.
Okay. Thanks, Ken.
So, I need a motion to go into public.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries. So, we'll just go down the line. If anyone has.
I have a question regarding the traffic on Hartford with construction vehicles.
You know the, you know the drill. Even dress for the ride.
Sharon Coriel, Seven Marshia Drive.
Very good.
Okay, I have a question regarding the vehicles that are traveling on dump trucks with the jake brakes from 10:30 PM till 3:25 PM every night except Saturday and Sunday.
Really?
You cannot sleep. All the residents there are in up norms about it. I followed these trucks. They are speeding excessively, over 55 miles an hour on Hartford. And I followed them from my home on Seven Marshia, all the way out to Route 70, where they're doing the paving on Route 70. And they're returning here to Union Lanting Road to pick up the asphalt. The frequency of the trucks at the longest longevity is 30 seconds. You cannot sleep with the noise. You cannot sleep with the two potholes that have been existing on Hartford across from my home in front of Delran High School. When they hit those bumps, everybody's complaining about cracks in their home, in their foundations. There are pictures on the wall, the noise, and what can be done? I understand that in consideration of traffic, that Route 70 is doing this project. It's a wonderful project, but at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, it's not so wonderful to the residents. Is there an alternate route that can be utilized or a noise ordinance in effect for that?
Let me just say one thing, and I'm only going to talk about the potholes. When you have the pothole issue, contact Jeff.
It's been reported three times by two different residents.
Do you know who they reported to? Because I know it's never been reported to name.
I can give you those names.
Can you make a recommendation to those people though? If they have an issue, contact Jeff and Jeff will make sure that they're taken care of right away, because I agree, those potholes on Hartford sometimes they get down.
Are they, are they potholes or they, there's one area where there's a dip?
It's a dip.
But there are potholes also down by.
Yeah, there are.
But, but that's not by where you are, but I agree. Just do me a favor, he'd be the point of contact. Other than that, all right.
No problem. But is there anything in the noise?
I, I think we, we've, we've, you know, I don't know what legally we can do, but we have requested various, you know, companies to maybe take an alternate route. Did, I mean, should they be using Hartford Road for that? Is there any reason that they should?
It's been in progress for over three weeks now.
Oh, yeah, they're almost done.
Combined with the stonehead dump trucks.
They're, they're paving right in front of where I work. And, and Jim, maybe you can help me with this. It seems like they've put three level layers. Is that how you do that? I mean, it must be a total reconstruction.
I don't know what's going on with that. But, yeah, all over layer, I don't know.
Well, they milled or they took it down and then they put a layer and they rolled it over and they do it overnight and, and, and then they stripe it. And then the next day, they do it again. They're on the third level. I mean, it's got to be this, this high.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a big.
Those are made of different layers, basically.
Right, okay. So.
I mean, I don't know how much more of the project is going.
It's going a while.
You have, there's no, there's no noise ordinances, I mean, sorry, there's no weight restrictions on Hartford Road. It's on Tugger Road.
Can we, do we know, any idea, did you see, happen to see who the, who the asphalt company was?
There are various. I was 14 trucks in front of me in line and I lost count and got disgusted at 2:00 AM and turned around to come back and follow the trucks coming to Union Lanting.
Got you.
And they're lined up there as well.
All the way to 70.
I mean, I'm speculating here, there's no way you can get an ordinance done in time or, or why the park is still.
Oh, no, we can get the police. We can get the police out for speed limits, for sure. We get the potholes fixed. And we can touch base with the contractor to see if there's another avenue, but if we don't have a, a weight limit, I don't know how we can stop that legally.
Right.
We can, we can address it to see if those three items.
Are they getting the asphalt from the Pearson plant on Union Lanting?
I'm not familiar with the name of the plant. At 2:00 in the morning, my headlights only goes so far in the woods.
Only, only goes on, meaning with some representatives of RE Pearson at 6:30 AM.
But they were lined up there. We were.
There's a Taylor's Lane? Were they on Taylor's Lane or were they on?
It was Union Lanting Road and you go down about, I guess, a half mile on the right-hand side.
That's most likely Pearson.
Okay.
Tom, maybe you can, you can see what they're up to.
At 6:30 AM?
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll love to hear that from you.
Yeah, yeah.
Bring your counsel.
Well, at least they'll have been up for three hours by now.
Well, I'll be down in Bridgeport.
Oh, okay. This isn't generally something that's regulated by way of a noise ordinance. They're permitted to be there at that set time, that given weight. I mean, the, the noise that they produce is a natural effect of them completing the project. Moreover, the practical implications, put in a permanent ordinance prohibiting certain noises made by dump trucks between certain periods of time. It's a temporary project. The ordinance stays, the project ends and then it's, it's a, the things don't just.
But there is a detriment to our homes. We are getting cracks in our walls, in our foundation from this constant ba-boom, ba-boom. Every truck that goes, ba-boom, ba-boom. Everybody's complaining about that. That's legal?
So, so, I'm sorry, what do you, what do you mean by that's legal?
That's legal for them to encourage and impede that through the traffic.
Well, ma'am, if you feel they're causing damage to your home, you as a private citizen can sue them and retain an attorney.
And who do you sue? You've got maybe 14 different contractors.
Well, respectfully, I can't give you legal advice. I'm not your attorney.
Okay, but you're giving me advice.
The more parties to sue, the better, though.
I got a message.
And if you call the police and tell them, if you call the police and tell them about the noise, if they would just come down and hear it for themselves, that's not their job, is the answer. So, whose job is it?
So, hang on. So, there's no ordinance that says that they can't do that.